Good evening, I would like to call to order the May ninth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Norwalk Public Council. If you will please rise and join me in pledging an intuitions to our next step. Ms. Matthews, if you please call the role.
Councilmember Burnett.
President.
Councilmember Camacho. Councilmember Goldstein.
Here.
Councilmember Najelski Eichner.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Ayers.
Present.
Councilmember Hubelmann.
Present.
Councilmember Revolus.
Here.
Councilmember Young.
Here.
Councilmember Kites.
Here.
Councilmember McMur.
Present.
Councilmember Alterman. Councilmember Me. Councilmember Livingston.
Here.
Councilmember Shanahan. We have twelve.
Well, President, we have a quorum. First item on the agenda, the acceptance of the minutes of the special meeting of April twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. Do I have a motion? Mr. Hubelmann. Any corrections, deletions, omissions? Mr. Burnett.
Just one minor typo on page four of the minutes at the middle of the page. The word motion should be spelled correctly. M O T I O N.
Any further corrections, omissions, deletions? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting the minutes as corrected?
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a motion? Ms. Smith. Any corrections, omissions, deletions? Mr. Burnett, again.
Mr. Mayor, again, on page seven of those minutes, the same minor typo correction, the word motion. M O T I O N.
Okay. Any further corrections, omissions, or deletions? Seeing none, all in favor of the minutes as corrected? Opposed? Extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda, public participation. Do we have anybody? Nobody here in the council chambers, but do we have anybody online waiting to address the council? Okay?
Tanner, you're promoted to panelist, so you can go ahead and take the mic.
Sorry, is that directed at me? Is it my turn?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Tanner Thompson. I'm the Chair of the Bike Walk Commission. I wanted to join briefly and say a few words about May, which is National Bike Month. Our celebrations are underway.
Uh, Mr. Thompson, we can only speak about items that are on the agenda.
Oh, shoot, that's right. That's right. Okay. Um, well, then I will email you. I yield my time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further participation from the public?
No, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we'll close public session. Next for, uh, on the item, we have resignations and appointments. We have two resignations, Ms. Jennifer Belliet from the Conservation Commission, who wishes to spend more time with her family, and Mr. John Mailing from the Conservation Commission, who has moved out of the area and can no longer serve. We have no appointments, reappointments. Under Mayor's remarks, I have a few. Uh, May is Mental Health Month, and as you know, this past weekend, uh, we had the Norwalk, the Second Annual Norwalk. A lot of the council people were there. We thanked them. Uh, it's a reminder that there are many people that are struggling with mental health issues. Our young people are suffering isolation, and it's good to know that, uh, when we do something like this, it's good to let people know that we have their back and that, uh, they're not alone and that there is help available to them. Uh, May is also Asian Pan American Heritage Month, uh, and we are proud to celebrate the cultural heritage and influence that AAPIs have had on the history of the United States, the state of Connecticut, and our community. May is also Haitian American, Haitian Heritage Month, and May eighteenth is Haitian Flag Day. Uh, May eighteenth celebrates, uh, the, uh, that Haiti was the first Latin American country to gain independence from France in nineteen, in eighteen oh four. Uh, it's, uh, eighteenth, we're gonna have a flag raising at the Heritage Wall. Uh, all are invited to attend. And on May eighteenth, I will join the Haitian American Collaborative, including common council member Diane Revolus in raising the flag. Uh, I invite the community to join me. This pa- uh, May twentieth is National Kids in the Park Day. As a reminder, it's hosting the first kids, uh, to Park Day on Saturday, May twentieth. National Day of Kids in the Park falls on the third Saturday of May. It aims to connect kids and families with state and local national parks, get them outside in the fresh air and away from some of the electronics that, uh, they like to have in their hands. So hopefully we'll get a lot of participation. I believe on that day, uh, Norwalk Public Schools is also going to be giving away a thousand books, I believe, and it's gonna be at Norwalk High School, like it was last year. So it's a good combination of things. You know, get, come to the park or go, get some books and then go to the park and read them. So we'll have a good time then. Uh, upcoming Restaurant Week, I know it's not this month, but June fifth through eleventh. Uh, we've asked restaurants interested in participating to send their menu, uh, the menu specials by Friday, May twenty-sixth. Restaurants around the city would, uh, will offer an appetizer, entree, and a dessert at a discounted price. We hope that we have lots of businesses. Always good to come out and support our local businesses. One of the things we've always tried to, uh, promote is buy local, and it'll help our economy, uh, and go out and enjoy yourself as well. We have some wonderful, wonderful restaurants in Norwalk, not just on Washington Street, but all over the town. And, uh, last but not least, uh, most of you already know, uh, that Diane, uh, Diane, Lisha King has, uh, submitted her resignation as my Chief of Staff to accept a job as the Deputy Commissioner of the Connecticut Department of Transportation. While we're all really, really saddened to see her leave, especially me, because she's been a blessing to my administration, uh, we're, uh, we're happy for her because this is another chapter in her life, a career move. A career move that has a potential for her, and I know she's going to do a great job, uh, in Hartford as, as, as she did here. Uh, she has done so much. We've, when, when I first, um, interviewed Lisha, uh, I asked her one question. I asked her, tell me what you think the Chief of Stuff, the Chief of Staff does. And I didn't have to ask her any more questions. She nailed it. She was a Deputy Chief of Staff in, uh, New Haven prior to coming here. And, um, she was a real blessing. Uh, she has made her, uh, mark on the city of Norwalk, and some of the things that we have accomplished together, uh, in, with our vision, trying to lead the city of Norwalk for, uh, forward and keeping it the place that people want to come and live and work and play. Uh, and I, I congratulate her. As I said, I'm truly saddened to see her go, but we wish her well as she moves into the new chapter of her life. And, uh, I'm sure she'll, like I said, succeed, and she'll be as effective in Hartford as she was here in Norwalk. So, uh, uh, thank you all. I don't know if anybody says a comment, uh, that they'd like to add. Gosh, Mr. Goldstein.
Well, it's obviously, it's bittersweet. I mean, Lisha has been, as Mayor said, I mean, Lisha's been such an essential, essential piece, not only to our government, but also making sure that literally that this city runs. So I, wow, we will miss her a lot, and she has done wonders for the city. Thankfully, uh, our loss is the state's gain. And we're gonna have to do a lot of transportation projects to make sure she, uh, we make sure she's in Norwalk all the time. So, wow, congratulations.
Any other comments or Mr. Livingston?
Thank you. I mean, it's hard to summarize in just a couple of words, you know, what it's been like to work with Lisha over the last six years, I think. Um, as I said to her earlier, I'm sort of in various stages of grief, uh, one of which being denial, which I got rid of when I saw the press release, but, and what I said to her, and I think really believe is that while I feel this is a tremendous loss to me as a resident of Norwalk, I think it's a tremendous gain to me as a resident of Connecticut. And I'm sure she'll do a fantastic job up there. We will miss her. She's done so much here, but, um, so I can say. Thank you.
Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, bittersweet is, uh, I don't know, kind of a not strong enough word for me. Um, this is very hard. Uh, Lisha has been, um, instrumental in my growth as a council member. Um, I have learned so much from her. I, I'm also, I think, you know, when I first came on the council, as I'm in my sixth year here, and, um, she led us through the reorganization. And, you know, for myself personally, I have seen the city run so much more efficiently. Um, and, and I think that we serve the city of Norwalk so much better because of the reorganization, um, the new departments that she guided us to add. Um, I, I mean, she's just been a wonder, frankly, uh, for the city of Norwalk, and this is a huge loss. And so that being said, I do wish Lisha all the best, and, and it is a gain for the state of Connecticut, and we only win in that way as well.
Any further questions, uh, comments, Mr. Hubelmann?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, you know, I have to echo what my colleagues have said. Um, Lisha is a, has become a good friend of mine, and, um, I met her, uh, when I first sort of was drawn to District A, and she, uh, lives in the, in the district as well. Um, this is a great opportunity for her, so it's, it's hard to feel really bad because you feel good for a friend who's making, uh, a move such as this. Um, but, uh, we're all better for her having been here, and I think that, that to me is one of the more important things to remember, and that she's not leaving Norwalk. She's, and as Mr. Livingston has said, you know, she's gonna be working for us now at the state level. So I hope she brings that same energy and expertise to that position and makes things happen up there. So we're missing.
I agree. Any further comments? Uh, Mr. Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, uh, Lisha's been such an asset to the collective success and, and progress of the council, as well as uh, individually helping each council member, whether they're new, experienced, just navigate through what it takes to be on the council and to serve the city. Um, I, I especially appreciate her commitment to, uh, being a problem solver and, and coming up with, um, the necessary thought pattern in terms of how do we move forward? If we have an issue, how do we get to a solution? And, and I think that's going to be the biggest item that we're going to miss, but, um, I'm sure she'll be available to help us continue to navigate through whatever issue we need to.
She's already made that commitment. Any further comments, Ms. Young?
So, I'm gonna take a little different approach. I, I agree with everything my colleagues have said, but in addition to what Greg said about her thinking process, Lisha has made being in government a lot easier and simpler. I think she takes this approach of explaining things to the common person and makes it easy to understand. And I think she's, she's been very welcoming and approachable, and that, and that's not something you can say with all politicians, although we'd like to say that, think that, um, but who she is at the core, um, makes her the ideal person in the position that she was in here, that she still holds right now till the end of the thirty-first, but even better when she goes to the DMT. Um, I, she just has that ability to connect with people, and that's path of politics, being able to connect with people so that they trust you and hear you, whether or not you're telling them, that you're giving them the answers they want to hear or not. She is that person, and, and she has been a real asset for the city of Norwalk, and she's still gonna live here, you know.
Yes, she is. Same place. We know where to go.
We know where to go when we need something, and so I, I think, um, as everyone said, the city is better off for it, and yes, I'm just happy to have known her, um, to have gotten some experience and some, some insight from her, and wish her well. And, and she's gonna do great in whatever she decides. So this is just one, the next step in her career. So, thank you.
Any further comments? So I will be putting together a search committee. She's offered to help with the interviews because while she's still here. Uh, you know, one of the most important, or several of the most important qualities in Lisha had every one of them. Loyalty, trustworthiness, skill sets. You know, she is a genius at what she does, and it's always comfort, comforting when you give somebody an assignment, and you know, not only is it gonna get done, it's gonna get done well, it's gonna get done on time, and it's gonna get reported back with the success that it was. So, again, um, as you all feel badly, as certainly I do, I think both of us, when Lisha first told me, teared up a bit.
Oh, yes.
Uh, Lisa could, Lisha could almost not get it out because she was choked up, uh, and that just shows the type of person she is. So we wish her well, and, uh, we tell her that she still has a family here, and she will be terribly missed. Okay, having shed our tears, uh, Mr. Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, before we move to the consent calendar, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the companies that assisted in the twenty twenty-three Volunteer Arbor Day cleanup event that took place. Um, these companies donated time to, to really help keep things safe as, as, uh, in, in terms of those that utilize the walking trails and, and ensure there were, um, no environment, uh, where there would be any hazard. So uh, wanted to just take a moment to acknowledge Hutchinson Tree Care Specialists, Almstead Tree and Shrub Care Company, the Lewis Tree Service, provided by Eversource, Bartlett Tree Experts, Orchard Tree Care, and finally, the City of Norwalk DPW Tree Team. They did an outstanding job in, in donating their time, and we thank them for their efforts.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to the consent calendar tonight for, um, Tuesday, May ninth, uh, Councilmember Nora Najelski-Eichner will be reading the consent calendar.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, item seven, A two, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and all documents associated with submission of the PY forty-nine annual action plan to HUD. Item three, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and all documents consistent with the approved PY forty-nine annual action plan. Seven B, one, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute a First Amendment to the Management Agreement between the City of Norwalk and Connecticut Institute for Communities, Inc., C I F C, to provide early childhood programs at Nathaniel Eli Center to extend the term of the agreement from July one, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-eight. Item two, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute a First Amendment to the Management Agreement between the City of Norwalk and Connecticut Institute for Communities, Inc., C I F C, to provide early childhood programs at Benjamin Franklin Center to extend the term of the agreement from July one, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-eight. Item three, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an amendment to the agreement with Gilbain Building Company for Norwalk High School Improvement Project to provide additional preconstruction services in the amount of ninety thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars, envelope review, review services in the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars, interdisciplinary document coordination in the amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars. Contractor-controlled insurance program services savings in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars to be taken at the time of GMP amendment. Incorporation of a project labor agreement, PLA, no fee required. Account noted. Item four, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an agreement with Van Zalm Haywood and Shadford, Inc., to provide building commissioning services for the South Norwalk School Project for a total not to exceed one hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and five dollars. Account number noted. Item five, authorize Office of Building Management to issue change orders on contract for additional services as may be required for a total not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Account number noted. Item C, uh, excuse me, and C one, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute a Second Amendment to the March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one agreement between the City of Norwalk and AI Engineers, Inc., for project number DPW twenty twenty-one dash one, On Call Engineering Services. The amendment is to extend the agreement for a period of one year at a sum not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars billable on an hourly basis with an option to extend for one additional term for one year. Account numbers noted. C two, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute a Second Amendment to the March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one agreement between the City of Norwalk and Tie and Bond, Inc., for project number DPW twenty twenty-one dash one, On Call Engineering Services. The amendment is to extend the agreement for a period of one year at a sum not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars billable on an hourly basis with an option to extend for one additional term for one year. Account numbers noted. Item C three, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute a Second Amendment to the March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one agreement between the City of Norwalk and Weston and Sampson Engineers, Inc., for project number DPW twenty twenty-one dash one, On Call Engineering Services. The amendment is to extend the agreement for a period of one year at a sum not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars billable on an hourly basis with an option to extend for one additional term for one year. Account numbers noted. Item C four A, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an agreement between the City of Norwalk and CDM Smith, Inc., for professional engineering services for project DRG twenty twenty-three dash two Engineering Services, Municipal Separate Stormwater Sewer, Separate Storm Sewer System, MS four, for a sum not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred dollars. Account numbers noted. Item C four B, authorize the Chief of Operations and Public Works to execute orders on the contract with CDM Smith, Inc., for professional engineering services for project DRG twenty twenty-three dash two Engineering Services, Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, MS four, for a sum not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Account numbers noted. That concludes the consent calendar.
Thank you, Councilmember Nora Najelski-Eichner. Um, you've heard the reading of the consent calendar. Also, the, well, a question, all those in favor? All those opposed have the same right. Any abstentions? It pass.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Uh, Mr. Kites, item seven A one.
Thank you. Um, and it's item, uh, A one, it's authorized Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute a land disposition and development agreement together with any and all agreements and documents required thereunder with Sono TOD two LLC, the developer, for purpose of conveying a portion of thirty Monroe consisting of forty-six thousand, ninety-four plus feet, square feet, identified as concept property lines as and when shown in a certain map entitled zoning location and topography survey, seventeen Chestnut, prepared before Sono TOD two LLC, Norwalk, Connecticut, dated March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, prepared by William W. Seymour and Associates, P C. This, uh, said city parcel to be consolidated with the land of the developer identified on the tax assessors' record as MBL two five five six, two twenty-five fifty-seven, and two twenty, uh, two fifty-five twenty-two. The developer, together with the city property collectively, the project site, for purpose of construction, instructing with the project site, a mixed-use development containing commercial space, residential units, structured parking facility, sixty of which to be dedicated for the use, uh, by commuters of the South Norwalk Train Station, recreational area, and related improvements pursuant to the LDA term sheet. Um, I like to move it, and, uh, thank Darren for this detailed, um, uh, item. He's done, and, uh, I'd like to actually, uh, pass this on, if I may, to, uh, Mr. Bedoli, the, uh, head of redevelopment, uh, to give us a little background on this project. Brian?
Mr. Bedoli. Thank you. Um, good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you all. Hope you're doing well. Um, as was mentioned in the, uh, action item, or considering tonight is related to a land disposition agreement for a project at fifteen seventeen Chestnut Street, that's over there on the corner of Chestnut and Henry. Uh, that really came out of our work, uh, with the Sono South Norwalk Station area TOD plan. We took about a year and a half when I first started this position, uh, to do a planning study with the community, identify opportunities in the area, and also mitigation strategies from an infrastructure development perspective. And an opportunity came, presented itself, um, in the form of this development project, which you all considered, I believe it was last spring, on the initial term sheet for the land disposition. Um, since then, we've gone through a period of due diligence with the developer. Some of the substantive, uh, terms of that deal have changed. Um, so we wanted to come, obviously come back to you. Uh, this has been approved by the Economic Community Development Committee, uh, as well as gone through an eight twenty-four review and passed the planning and zoning. Uh, but I'll pull up a map real quick just to acclimate you all again, um, to the actual project site. Um, so what we're talking about again is the disposition of sixty parking spaces, included in the existing surface lot to the adjacent property owner here. Spinnaker Real Estate Partners actually owns this. This is the private portion of the parcel. And what we're structured, what we have structured is a public-private partnership to try to make, you know, the high, get the highest and best use out of the, the land right near the train station, recognizing its value, um, from a density perspective to improve walkability and, uh, the overall sustainability of the area. Um, within that context, this is the area of the parking that will be, um, disposed or sold to the developer. Uh, the specific conveyance map is included in your packet. Um, and what it will pave the way for is a two-hundred-unit mixed-use development project, um, right at the train station here. Um, if you give me one quick second, I'll stop the share and go through some of the details of it. So in terms of the specific transaction, um, sixty parking spaces will be sold to the developer. Those will be um, replaced in a structure garage in the new development at a one-to-one ratio in the new building. Um, the developer will continue manage, will, will be the one to manage the parking in this scenario, but the parking authority will continue to be the responsible one for enforcement with temporary parking being provided in the interim as the building is constructed. Um, the parcel would be acquired, actually at the fair market value of four point six million dollars. There will be a credit issued as part of the transaction of one point oh five oh million dollars for, uh, the parking garage. And really, this is calculated because the cost of structuring parking is more than the actual value of the cash flow for that parking. So we worked out in the negotiation with the developer, and this is the same term that was put into the, the initial term sheet that you all approved. Uh, one of the more favorable terms of this whole deal is that, uh, this unlocks six million dollars in state funding for area infrastructure. Um, five million of that dedicated for, you know, the roadway improvements, making sure the traffic impacts are mitigated. And then a million dollars, which we really wanted to focus as part of this, uh, um, project, and what there was, you know, when we presented to the state as an equitable transit-oriented development project, where the new development's coming in, but we're able to generate a million dollars, um, in resources from the state to, uh, improve and enhance existing affordable housing right in the project area. Um, through the due diligence period, we identified, uh, some environmental, environmental contamination, which resulted in a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar credit um, since the last term sheet that you all considered to the developer, and this is should we be unsuccessful to obtain additional grant funding from the state? We put it in an application a couple of weeks ago, and we should be knowing in June whether or not we're able to cover that, in which case the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars would not be issued as a credit. The developer would elect to, you know, use the grant funds to do that cleanup. Um, effectively, what you have before you tonight is, uh, detailed terms and conditions, which, you know, we've worked out closely with our, uh, third-party counsel, Shipman Goodwin, as lo- along with, uh, City Corporation Counsel's Office, Darren Callahan. And then one of the things I really want to touch on about this specific project, um, and Darren will speak a little bit more to the actual details of the LDA, is really how we work very hard to mitigate as much of the risk possible that is inherent to a development project of this type and scale. Uh, and this is a, this is a very important consideration, you know, particularly considering the city's experience with the Poco project, and helps us really set a way forward for public-private partnerships, um, in general, so the city can really access these opportunities to capture as much of the benefit, um, of these projects while minimizing risk. So I'll speak high level to that, and Darren can sort of pack in some of the additional detail. Um, so specifically, we structured a very comprehensive package, uh, within the context of risk mitigation. Um, and this was done through a combination of escrows, performance bond, and actually a personal guarantee from the developer. Um, it's very important to note, and how this differs from perhaps other projects that have been done in the past, is that the developer is paying fair market value for this property. This is a transaction. the developer is paying fair market value for this property. This is a transaction, and we are, are just securing our rights through this land disposition agreement. Uh, there will be an escrow account established, uh, and this will be actually as a, a method of security, because as they replace the parking, uh, performance payments will be issued, um, so that, you know, rather than selling the property, hoping we get our parking, um, we're actually gonna be holding on to a million dollars that's gonna be paid out based on a number of completion milestones. And the whole thing will be guaranteed by a performance bond while this occurs. Um, another thing to note is that, uh, the property will only be conveyed once zoning approvals are in place and a permit-ready, uh, letter is issued. And I, I would be remiss to not mention, we're, you know, we're working with a thoroughly vetted Norwalk-based company with a demonstrated history of performance. And I can't go without just noting, and Darren, uh, this is my way of introducing him effectively, is, uh, his commitment to, and his relentless commitment and meticulous approach to structuring these legal, um, this overall legal structure to protect the city and the overall transaction has been incredible. And I think it's, it's really a pathway forward for, um, how we're, you know, approach P threes in the future. So Darren, I would kick it over to you if you have anything to say in, in addition to what I just went over.
Uh, thanks, Brian, for the, uh, kind comments. Um, actually, I, I think you hit all the, uh, the high points, including, um, the points that I would hit with respect to how we secure the transaction to, um, a series of, 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 uh, uh, of bonds, payment bonds and, um, and, and guarantee agreements, uh, in, um, crediting back, uh, the parking credit in, in, uh, um, over the course of construction, um, to, to ensure that, you know, um, that the uh, money, um, laid out by the city, uh, is secured until the project's completed. So I really don't have much to add. I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has on the panel, but I, I don't want to take up needlessly anyone's time here.
Thank you both. Um, any further comments or questions or? Mr. Livingston?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I think we've talked about this a lot at, uh, on the committee level, and I don't really have a lot to say, but you know, when people think about L D As, they unfortunately, as you mentioned, Brian, think about Poco. And I have to, and I did this on the committee level as well, I think some of us did, have to commend you and Darren for all of your hard work to mitigate and protect, mitigate risk and protect the city uh, every way possible. And I, I really think that this is, as you said, Brian, a, can be a template for future deals. And I thank you and Darren for putting it together. I also thank you, Brian, for your financial wizardry, which made all none of the financing possible. So thank you for all, all your hard work. I think this is, what you've done is great. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments to quest, uh, questions, discussion? Mr. Kides?
Thanks. I just wanna just follow up and kind of echo Mr. Livingston's comments. Uh, a lot of times, more times than not, um, these projects, uh, the infrastructure and all the financing and the improvements in the area come out of the city's pocket. And, and I want to thank you, Mr. Bedoli, for, you know, really putting in the effort and finding this funding. I think any project that we do of this size or this magnitude, I don't think the city should be on the hook for the, uh, for all the infrastructure surrounding the project and, uh, this is, uh, you know, yeah, you know, love it or hate it, this is, uh, it's great that we're not paying to, uh, the city, the city Norwalk taxpayers aren't paying for all the infrastructure improvements. So thank you, Brian. Thank you, uh, Darren, for all your hard work.
Any further questions? Comments? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Think that's the only other business to come before the council?
Motion to adjourn.
Right on target. Thank you, Miss Reverend. Motion to adjourn at eight oh five. All in, the hands are already up. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? We are adjourned at eight oh five. Thank you, all. And, uh,